Yeah.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the June twenty-fifth meeting of the White Lake Library Board of Trustees to order at six forty.
Eight.
Eight? Okay, so let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
All right, Carrie, would you like to do the roll call?
President Jennifer Phillips.
Here.
Vice President Eric Shawlock.
Present.
Treasurer Juan Villanueva.
Here.
Secretary Kerry Francis present.
Becky Beckman.
Here.
Rusty William Monsbury.
Present.
Director April Stevenson and Assistant Director Amy Rosen are also on the agenda.
Thanks. Could I get someone to review tonight's agenda and ask for approval?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four yes, five yes votes? All right, we do not have any public right now to comment. And I will need someone to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of the White Lake Library Board of Trustees held on May twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five yes votes? All right. I think, moving to officer reports, I don't have a report per se other than I'm sad I missed the celebration. And from the pictures, it looks like there was dancing to be had, so. Thank you for sharing. Yeah, no, thanks for sharing the pictures.
I don't have a report other than also to echo the congratulations on the party. It's a nice one.
And Secretary, I agree with those sentiments. It was very good time. Mother report.
Treasurer?
Yep.
And I'm gonna say diddle. We had a lot of fun.
Well, good.
Everybody did a nice job. The friends did a great job.
Even the anti disco people.
And we were very impressed with a lot of the disco outputs. They were amazing. Um, okay, so we don't have any CDs to look at this month. We made a decision for the one that's coming up in last month. We made a decision on what's coming up in Genesis in July. So we're all set there, and I'm hoping that people have looked through the balance sheet and the briefings and what we've, you know, spent in the last, in May. And if there are no questions, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the June bills for payment as presented.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have to move any money from one bank to another to pay bill?
Because we had three CDARS that came due in the last few months, and the CDARS are through Flagstar. And we'd already made that recommendation to move them right into the checking. And I think, I didn't look today, but we have close to a million dollars between the sweep account and the checking account right now.
Okay.
So we're good.
All righty. Thank you. Is this microphone working? Can you guys hear me?
You've got a little bit closer.
I moved it.
I'm loud enough.
Okay. Forget that's the microphone too. All right. Moving on, we're looking for the director's report.
Um, okay, so I'll just kind of sum this up a little bit. Me, I have the opportunity to meet with some representatives, Senator Gary's office and Lou Stevens office to the fiftieth anniversary proclamations. These were very last minute, and that's why you didn't receive some sort of invitation to get into the photo office. We didn't know when they were coming. They just said they were coming, so that's why.
All right.
But we did receive proclamations from them as well, so we're off that. Um, thank you to all board members for attending the township presentation of their fiftieth anniversary proclamation and the promissive. Well, we appreciate that. Circulation services, we processed Nancy did some eight currents for applications for Hope Elementary students because they didn't visit our library, so we were happy about that. Kim attended the SASA meeting and the T L N annual membership picnic. Um, app is up again, so that's good news. Constant contact open rate is also off a bit. I have to say pretty close to sixty percent almost. That's really good business. Um, we can see the five star Google rating, just the rating, no comments, but we'll take it. Um, record connections, get my mutual meetings, something really out of the ordinary, makes more of a quieter month. Friends. Friends continue to encourage participation in group events for all ages and to make their quarterly meeting successful. Working families, they are changing the start times for the foreseeable future to six thirty P M. Uh, and they have also structured their upcoming evening with a hypnotist program to make it more affordable to their younger guests. So that what that basically means is that they were originally intending to do more like a dinner like they did last year with the mystery dinner theater. So this time they're gonna be get more snack days, so in the case of lower the cost and be able to. Several members of their group attended a recent program at the Novi Library, which is sponsored by the Friends of Michigan Libraries. That's the whole big friends of in the state. They shared ideas and looked into incorporating, look to incorporating increased presence at community events, levels of sponsorships in their membership and other fundraising videos. And they're looking for some sponsorship opportunity that's similar to something that the Novi Friends is currently offering. And of course, the biggest greatest news in this section, they had a record reaching June book sale, bringing in over seven thousand dollars, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's yet again, right?
Yes, yet again.
And that's in addition to the online sales I had. That was.
Right. Yes, that was just.
Uh, outreach, uh, we are hosting early intervention from Karen Bailey Schools twice a month throughout the summer. This is, uh, early intervention from Karen Bailey Schools offers summer programming for preschool age children in local communities. Again, Hope Elementary exists with a dozen forty-five first grade students. Uh, that did happen to be the same woman you all came in for your, for that big photo, so I brought you show that to this. One morning. Emily was selected again to continue as Emily Ambassador to sixth annual conference team. I do want to give you a heads up on that M L A conference that is going to take place in November, eighteen twenty-two. Uh, so I am going to be looking at Pledge of Allegiance and also for you to attend that conference as well. If there's interest.
I went to that maybe three years ago, and it was very interesting. They had a bunch of different libraries. I had presented programs and things that they had done, and there were some very interesting ones. And then, then there were a ton of vendors there. And we were able to look at different options. For some reason, we were looking for storage, uh, like racks and things that could be used. Um, and there were tons of different options, so it was very useful, and it was just at the suburban collection. Is that where it is again? So it's worth your time if you can go.
Okay.
And I think we got lunch. Did we get lunch?
You often even get lunch.
Yeah. Okay, so anyway, I, I went and I, I thought it was worth the time.
Yeah.
We know where. And you got lots of free. They've got lots of swag too.
Yes. In twenty twenty-six, do we know?
In October. But I'll get.
Thank you.
I'll get you.
Yeah, we got pens and Post-its and.
And they have some good programming for trustees, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, even McCarthy Smith was there. They were, they were finishing up our library at the time, and they were there, so I got some free pens from them too. So yeah, I would recommend it.
Several days, but you can kind of pick and choose because whether you go for one day, whether you go or you take a look at what they offer. Set up of that. Okay, thank you. Um, if your reviews have started, so it's that time of year across all our employees. Uh, landscaping, I want to be, I'm very thankful for our current volunteers. They keep our areas around the library shemmed and needed and looking good. But they are, there are only about two. So we are always looking for more people to help with that. Anniversaries.
Is that something that can be advertised on the website?
Um, yes, it can.
Can you put a note on the sign?
Is there a specific time they do it?
There is not. It is open for them to come home time. We just keep a notepad at the function that we should assess needs, and then they mark what they've done and verify.
Have you or have they ever looked at people that have to perform community service?
Uh, that's addressed in our current policy, and so we're not currently doing that.
Okay, I'm not really a hundred percent all of, it's all about reading, so, okay.
Okay, um, just continuing on our anniversaries, substitute librarian, Lois Keel spent about eighteen years. And Maria has spent the six years, so. Technology, everyone, uh, was out to reinitialize the hard drive of the camera due to a. Please, I face them, but I don't want to move there. Um, and that takes teamwork to make the dream work, so big thank you to my staff and to all that they do. Statistics, uh, you'll notice.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
And that's so long technology, this, um, this camera or this hard drive, the cameras, can you explain to me what that really is?
Okay.
Good.
Which that somehow during the power outage, that some of them re-initiated their, their, um, recording, and some of them got caught in a loop. It's happened, and it's been very annoying. He, that the whole circulation set had to look for a day for them to get out. And, um, more than a day, it took them two days to get out, and, uh.
When you say cameras, the cameras, I mean, this is part of security?
Yeah.
That's really all the kind of care.
So it's moved, was the hard drive for the recording.
Okay.
The cameras still worked, the recording did not.
How many cameras do we have?
No, twenty-eight. I think twenty-eight. I can't get them all on one screen and see them, so I only have nine shows.
Okay.
Okay, um, and then if we could, before you go on to the other, but, um, I'm, so when you said you met with the representative from Senator Peters and, uh, Representative Stevens' office, um, is that a, like, we contacted them, they contacted us?
We contacted them, just as we did all the other ones to get up with proclamation.
When you say other ones, what do you mean by other ones?
Senator Runstead, Township.
Representative Maddock?
Yes.
And, and were those the only two that answered you back?
No, we have Senator Runstead, we have Township. Uh, we tried Maddox, he didn't respond.
Okay, but, but you did get a response from Runstead?
No, we got the proclamation.
Okay, so you know, our, 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 our Senator, if he, this is, I assume it's all of our Senators, right? Our Senator has a dual job. Okay, he's getting two paychecks, so anyway, um, as our Senator, he's not really a full-time Senator anymore. So I just was curious as to if he did not respond, so anyway.
What else is he doing now?
What's that?
What else is he doing now?
He's the head of the state party.
Oh.
He's the chair of the state party on top of, we're paying him as taxpayers, constituents to do a job. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, this representative came on, I believe one was here for that.
Kevin.
Or even here for the one who.
I was here the one, I was, yes, and I think I was, I was here for the doc, the D A R and I.
Yeah, so we got the commie, we had Senator Ronstadt.
Sometimes when you're walking through the buildings.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, a few of those.
Shut down, I know this.
Yes, for sure. Um, so is, is the building, um, um, committee gonna talk about the sign outside? Is that on your agenda? Is not?
I think it's on the, the update.
Okay, okay, because I just want to hear about it. Okay.
Okay.
Um, okay, so statistics may as usually a quieter month, that's why you'll see some of them working on camera.
Why is the, um, drive-through window number's been so low this year as opposed to the year before? Was it just a novelty, something new in twenty twenty-four?
Going down a little bit, it went up due to getting the COVID test this month. I mean, first time you think it's a bear.
Okay.
Colder weather, they go up. I guess I remember.
Okay, I just was curious if it was still getting.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Little bit of novelty at first.
So the ones that went up versus the ones that were down, is that what you typically see, the ones that went up? Should have gone up, the ones that went down should have gone up.
Yeah, if you look straight up, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I was looking at those really.
She's kind of said that they have one.
May is usually slow.
I mean, it's been a trend on the window. The trend's been like that all year. It's been low.
Yeah.
I just.
I mean, you're about half and half.
Yeah.
Right?
It has been.
Approximately half went up, half went down. And that's just normal for May.
They're all down.
Hmm.
Yeah. Do we still do the curbside window that you have to call in, in advance?
Sorry.
Do we, do you still have it that we, you have to call in advance to use the curbside window?
Hey, William?
No, you can show up and run the.
I think just.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at them.
Yeah. Show up the side.
I think we're looking at different things.
About, you know, if someone comes in, how soon? You have two options, something all ahead, you can show up there, or you can, whenever you show up, you just.
And they'd go back and get it tied up. Okay, I didn't know that was possible at this point.
Yeah, it's a science rate when you pull up, it's right there.
I was pulled up there recently because I thought, oh, might as well just go in. Yeah, and how's the curtain though?
Well, the curtains are to protect that computer because what we found is the sun was beating right, right, so we were trying to protect it. Time it off seems to, um, quite blind, it's not, it's just gray.
Can we put a blind in there like what we have in the other, these other ones, does that?
Well, it's kind of hard because I knew we just need it on the one side.
Uh.
It's.
It's just not a great curtain.
It's just not.
I know, it looked like, um, somebody slept on it when I drove by that. With that curtain. Yeah.
We talked about those.
No.
No.
At the drive, at the, at the drive-through window, there's a new curtain.
Oh.
I filled up the other day. It was really wrinkled and it was all messy and I'm like.
That was the first two minutes I was back.
Oh, well, and then, of course, I got to see it. I'm like, wow, that does not look very good.
Maybe we couldn't, might be able to get looked at stuff that you can put on the window where it'll be.
Oh.
One set, you know what I'm talking about that.
Right, yeah.
But that is also gonna be, um, it's a thermal plug for winter time when it gets so cold in there that's dead. You know, that was just like holes of. It should be.
Oh, maybe it needs to be ironed.
That's true.
I've got a steamer from years of kids in dance competitions. It'll take wrinkles out of anything, and that's what the issue is.
That would be my report.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, April. Uh, now we're down to committee reports. Good.
Yeah, sure.
Building committee.
So, uh, we had our meeting on, um, uh, the ninth, right?
We didn't have.
But we didn't have one. We had it scheduled for the ninth, but we.
We ended up rescheduling and then.
Rescheduled and.
Rescheduled again.
So, uh, but anyway, here's the updates that we did discuss prior. Uh, we initiated the, the required paperwork and submitted the first payment, which we all saw in the treasurer's report.
If you would like, I'll trip you for just a second. I will add in a response at that. The required paperwork also is that the permits that are required to be pulled, so I've been getting with the township and with Blue Water to make those connections and get that required paperwork done. Uh, I did receive, actually today I received a response. Blue Water was inquiring about something having to do with paperwork that the township needed. I forwarded that to the township. They gave me a response, and I just sent that back to Blue Water, so, um, that's where we're at with that.
Okay. Okay.
What's their estimated time to be completed?
Well, hopefully we can get through this permit part first because that's slowing it down a little bit.
But what was the estimate to have it completed? Do we, did they give us an estimate?
It's probably on the paperwork.
I don't recall something specific. I think just.
If you give me a few.
Once it was permitted, I believe there was something, but.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so the donor tree was installed and I got to view it the other day as everybody else did. It would look great. Um, actually looks better in person. I mean, obviously than it did in the picture.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, um, uh, the additional counter space in the idea lab, we've notified the contractors, we accepted their quotes. Um, and I believe that we split those up, right?
Yes.
And then the material supplier ideal millwork has been out for the second sub measurements and is working on the project drops. And then our building committee goals for twenty twenty-five was still to investigate the cost of repairing wall cracks and painting for twenty twenty-six. We have hosted the walkthroughs for four vendors, uh, and there's a vendors listed. Well, investigate the cost of the full carpet and furniture cleaning for twenty twenty-six. And then our next meeting will be on Monday, July fourteenth, um, three P M via Zoom.
It can give you an update on the paintings. I have received one of those out of the four. I've seen one quote, um, I'm looking at.
I still have.
Quote, which has come through at, um, over, it's around forty-six thousand. Or that's just public area. It's not staff. I didn't include staff, and I did not include study. So I'm waiting to get all of these. Um, we see about what you're being, how that would.
And this would be done in twenty twenty-six?
Mm-hmm.
Are you gonna divulge where that came from or are you gonna wait on that? Okay.
These are just, the ones listed are just for, um, whole purposes. I would still have final, a final, once you, or if you approve it being painted, we would go through an official another whole process, uh, just to get a final. A lot around the windows need work. There's a lot of, in the cracks out here along the.
There's a big one in the orange area.
Yeah.
In the kids' section.
Lot of nail hops, a lot of, like I said, around the windows, just needs a lot of work. A lot of selling.
That's so weird.
Yeah.
Finance committee met, um, Thursday, the eleventh. Um, the, we discussed twenty twenty-five budgets on track and the work is continuing on twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, April's received the twenty twenty-four audit documents and has sent them to the committee, and we will discuss that at July meeting. Uh, the auditor will be, will present at the July board meeting along with the accountant to answer any questions we may have. Uh, two flag stars, flag star CDARS will deposit into place, flags are checking account. Uh, the principal and interest on the Genesis CD will roll over into a new Genesis CD. And the next CD due is a flag star, um, September fourth or twenty-five. Um, the, now that we have the tree installed, we'll review the final draft, the brochure. Uh, continuing our twenty twenty-five goals for the library foundation. Uh, April's reached out to attorney to inquire about necessary steps and considerations for setting up a foundation. Uh, she also met with the director of the Novi Library to discuss their general fund and contributed fund. Um, and then we met with former library director Denise, uh, to share information on the milledge process and to answer questions that we had. Our next meeting is Wednesday, July ninth via Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Becky, because we have a millage next year.
Okay.
That was really incredible, helpful, I, I.
Yes.
Yes, very much so.
And for some reason, I thought it was supposed to be milled this year, so I was, so.
Oh.
Like, it, it goes July twenty-sixth, but we have the whole year to plan it, right?
Yeah, well, we voted on it in August of, of twenty twenty-six.
You have to have the verbiage done by March or something.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think there's an April first cutoff.
Yeah.
There's, there's something in early April that's cut off, so we will have to have the verbiage done, um, in January and February. So. For what that's gonna look like. So at the end of the year, we'll be talking about what we want to do.
I can't agree to before early voting, but I've seen that right down.
Oh, that's right, and this is the first millage that we're gonna go through the early voting, so it might be even a little different.
You know, we should check and make sure we haven't, we don't run afoul of any of the early voting rules.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, shall I go forward?
Go ahead.
All right, so the next thing is the policy committee. Uh, we met earlier this month, and there were two items on our agenda then. One is the draft of the local author policy, local author, author material submission form, which we'll be covering in new business. Um, it's all based on the changes that we discussed in our last meeting that we had, and we're gonna be recommending the policy to the order at large for review. And then the other part was we reviewed the initial draft that April provided of the current unattended children policy. We decided giving away was probably not a great idea. Um, anyway, that initial draft was done. Uh, it incorporates some verbiage from other libraries. We're kind of putting them together. Uh, and we would like to see, we're gonna see another draft for the next committee meeting, which is Tuesday, July first at five P M via Zoom. So for the local lobby policy, I do business when we get to that.
Okay. Um, I can comment on the strategic planning committee. We did meet, uh, after a couple of reschedules, and we don't have a lot that we're still working on for this year. I recall we're like eight or nine items are all that's left, and everything's got some kind of activity going. And the only thing we're just kind of still asking everybody to think about, that we might do some, um, polling with is increasing the usage of the building, you know? What can we, what can we do? What do people want, expect? Is it something you'd pay for trying to, you know, flush out if there's anything we'd want to use for publicizing the millage thing, you know, the millages? Wh- whichever kind of village we end up going out with, it's going to sustain what we're doing now, plus, you know, if you're interested on Sunday hours every other weekend, you know, we'd have to ask for X amount of dollars.
For sure.
So.
If we're gonna extend hours, we're gonna have to have an increase because we're.
Yeah, because.
We're gonna have to increase.
You do a study, and we can't just squeeze it out of people that are already hired, that we're gonna actually need
Right.
more bodies and more hours to pull from, bigger pool, that our pool is pretty much used up just running the libraries day to day at this. So anyway, that's all we've got on, uh, polit- uh, strategic planning. That, and you know, we should be thinking, do we want to do another one? Twenty twenty-seven?
Do another what? Strategic plan?
We just want to.
I don't know if we have to, we didn't have one for several years.
Yeah.
Um, do we have, do we have to have a continuing strategic plan or?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
I think that we did.
Um, and, um, under the fourth goal, uh, the strategy three, um, also rich last year, and this you put in, yeah, but hopefully you potentially extend this.
Well, that makes a lot more sense.
It's just my personal opinion, we've been working this now for all many years. I do really like this strategic plan and there's many things on here that I would circle back to.
Yeah, I mean, we should go through it and see if we want to add more pillars or legs or whatever.
Tactics.
Yeah.
I, that's just my opinion, having worked with it.
Yeah. The other one just covered the old building, and the basic goal was to build a new building. So that's why we got a new strategic plan, because we've kind of finished the old one. And we can just extend this one, perhaps modify it.
I would say also just expanding on that, just, you know, next year being the millage and the world that's gonna go into that, you know, we may want to look at extending this.
To, to, to a fourth year.
Yeah, we'll go into a fourth year because we really want to focus on that knowledge, so, but just.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like over a three-year period, we'd be wise to add additional tactics that, to cover either the ones that we've completed or ones that have become outdated or outmoded.
Or things change, but you know, new technology. New technology.
So I have a question, this will go back in history, you know, prior probably to this strategic plan. But, um, my experience with strategic planning committees is that. It's basically the big committee that looks and works with other smaller committees, you know, committees underneath like, um, you know, planning for. Building stuff, for the big thing, finance stuff with, you know, um, so it's more of an encompassing, but I see this as more of a. Um. Internal. Goal building thing? Goals more so.
It was, it was, that strategic plan, we, we had a company come in and work with us for several months and we had a lot of people. From the, um, from the local community came in and participated. And from that, we were looking at, okay, what do we need to go forward, because our last strategic plan was just about building the building. And so then we had, um, like four years really that we were just, we just didn't have a strategic plan. Now that the building's built, what do we, this community wanna see out of this building? So that's how we came up with the strategic plan and out of that strategic plan came all of these goals for a three-year period. So that's where you see.
So, so it changes, the goal of the strategic planning committee. Is changed over time.
Our goal is.
Thoroughly focused on.
Yeah.
Our, for the patrons in the community to use the, the building that the building would meet their needs, that our expectations would be in alignment. With our, and that our budget could afford to do what people were expecting and if. They wanted or expecting something like a new building, then how do we finance these things? So it's kind of a, just a guiding document of what do we, what do we think we need to do as a team? You know, to have it do what it needs to do to make the people who use it happy. And, you know, identify anything, any place connects. Like, maybe people are really looking for some kind of technology for kids. That we aren't aware of, that there's even a new technology out there and that'll help us get in touch with that kind of stuff, so. I can see ongoing surveys helping to drive future years kind of thing, maybe we have a celebration with pop and cookies that. People can come to and we sit down and just have a talk. And, uh, you know, make a record of what people are asking for and. Remind people that these things all cost money. And are you willing to either A, pay more or B, get rid of something else to pay for this?
And one of the things that came, that came out of this, the, um, strategic goals that sort of surprised me was how many of the, um. The patrons of the library wanted to see more programs. And I think we do a tremendous amount of programs today and they want more.
They want more, yeah.
Okay. So I guess the answer to my question is, is the, the committee, uh, goals change. Over a time period depending on what the.
The communities.
Well, these. So if it went from building to.
Yes.
Building.
To what, to what our community is looking for out of this building.
The prior one was, um, what can we do to this small, tiny? Building that we know doesn't meet the needs, but what can we do to meet the most needs? That's how it started and then everything kept leading back to. We want a new building and, and so we finally said, well, then let's go out and do a village and see if people wanna do a new building and that's how it all started. Like, a lot of people thought it would pass. And I, were you around, it was kind of contentious, it was a close vote. And, uh, but people, there were enough people that wanted to see a new building and that's how we went from there.
So it gives me a better perspective, understanding of.
Okay.
I sat down in my first meeting here last week, so.
On the building committee, yeah, oh no, on the strategic plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we, we had.
Is there anything else?
No, I was just kinda curious, but generally, historically, you know, what was the? You know, the meat of the committee, what was his purpose?
In previous to the, um, the outcome of the, people wanted to see a new building. The previous strategic plan, if I remember correctly, before that was just like this one. What, what can, um, the library do to enhance the usability of the library for the community? So that's usually what is.
Like, there was a, a technology leg, there was, uh, off different kinds of things and under technology, it was like buying new computers and, um. Having a timing system on how much could you use a computer and just things to help. There was like six major, we called them links or something like that and they, and then there were things that, it was more. Uh, specific as to an activity or something like that, where a lot of these are more higher level ideas.
Yeah, I think they, they really started on the committee, but obviously I was, I saw the results of the, the previous one with the. I think there's the goals and there's the strategies to get to those goals and then there's the individual tactics from there. And I think what we're talking about in terms of extending things is not so much changing the goals unless those need to be changed, but. But definitely changing or adding to tactics and then as a result of that possibly adjusting strategies.
Yeah.
So it kind of all trickles back up.
Well, appreciate the answer.
Okay. All right, so, uh, Eric, are you presenting the author policy under new business?
We've got it here, um, April, you're welcome to add into if you'd like me to.
Wait, sir, it's not one W, it is three E.
That's what, yeah, yeah.
And then my question was. There's a policy as well as this form, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so can any local author come to April with a form and say, hey, I'd like, I wrote this kid's book, can I present it?
As long as they meet the criteria.
And then, but do we on our side? Look for local authors and say, hey, do you want to, or is it?
That's not really the way.
Is it a whole or a push system, I guess?
It, it's a, it's a, um, it's a push.
It's a push, the lo- the author has to push it, we're not out there actively.
Yes, uh, just historically how it's, in my career, how it's worked is that they reach out to us, uh, if they want to, they need to, or.
Okay.
Or they.
I'm sure they're looking to push their book.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the only authors that are writing books that they don't wanna push are ones that are doing vanity press stuff just for themselves or their families, they don't care about having it in the library.
I mean, we're doing, we're redoing our website. Could we maybe have a note on one of the pages in the website, like, hey, are you an author? Do you want to? Share your book with the community or tell us about it?
Sure.
Because like if I wrote a book, I wouldn't know I could come here and, I mean, I may be proactive enough to ask.
Right.
But I may not be. And, you know, is that something, you know, like opportunities to be involved or something like that, we just have a general page on things like that. We could put like, hey, you wanna be part of the gardening committee or? You know, anything like that, that. You know, we're looking for people to participate, but they may or may not know.
The only thing, having been in the, in the publishing industry for most of my life, it seems like, well, at least the majority of my career. The one thing I can say is that if you push a- and say, hey, we're advertising for local authors to get their material in. Then if we decide not to accept that book into the collection, that you're gonna have some people that are very upset.
Other than the author?
Uh, no, the author, but that's, that's the main one, but the authors are the vocal ones, so.
Well, we have a process for adding books to the collection, right?
One way to do this is to do a local author fair.
Okay.
So, yes, and that's an option, that it's not that you're necessarily taking in the books, it's that you're saying, okay, you can come, basically. Share your stuff.
Promote your book.
Okay, so just a placeholder.
Yeah.
Um, that was my question when I saw the form. But you just, do you just want us to approve the form or just wait till we have the whole policy?
No, we do have the whole policy.
Yeah, this is the whole policy.
This is it, okay.
Yes, yeah, but we, uh, we modified, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, I just was curious, this is new.
Uh, this is, this is Brian, yeah, this is Brian, and so. Um. Your chair of the policy.
No, we don't, we don't really.
Okay, okay, anyway, you're hearing me, so anyway, um, so your recommendation is we go ahead with this? And, and it's already been looked at by an attorney?
Uh, I believe so, I hear it's just been looked at by.
I've not put it back to attorney, I've taken it from, uh, other libraries that had, um, these policies.
Well, I think, um, it, I thought we were gonna have all the policies looked at from the attorney.
I have not, um.
I did choose one.
I, well, I thought we had decided that last year, that all the policies, we were gonna take what, what the, um, lawyers had. And we were gonna use those as templates and then anything else that we added that they didn't have, we were still gonna have them look at it. I thought we made that decision last year.
I'm not sure, I, I probably missed that one, um, we certainly, I certainly can run this by an attorney. Um, I don't. I'm not an attorney, obviously, I don't think there's anything in here that would be any sort of issue, um. So.
I don't either, but I think that was what we had decided last year when we were talking about. Starting the policy committee or maybe even at the end of the year before. That we would make sure that all of our policies actually had been run by the lawyers and we, I thought we even had a budget item. With the lawyers to ensure that we would verify all the policies followed the law.
I gotta find this.
Okay.
That's.
So if I could follow up then, um, so this is going in our bylaws? Or?
It's going into our, our palace, our policy, um, book.
Our policy, which is referenced in.
Oh.
A charter or a, our.
Um, I don't have the charter with me at the moment, but yeah.
It's reference, that policy book's reference.
It's our public name.
Okay.
So I guess from there we could choose to either wait for the attorney's approval on it or we can approve it conditional upon the improvement.
Let's, if everybody's read it, I think we should approve it, um, conditionally based on the, um, attorney approved.
Okay, the mo- the most recent change to it that we had talked about in the committee, if you remember, was the, uh. Make sure that it has to have an international standard book number, I S B N.
An I S B N, yeah.
Because otherwise, otherwise it makes it hard to catalog.
Yes.
But also doesn't meet usually the criteria for a book that people would want to. Circulate.
So. I only, only because I'm totally unfamiliar with this. From right here under requirements, it starts with local authors.
Yes.
And then there's some bullet points and then it says, please drop off or mail your book. Is this the same copy, like we're asking them to donate a copy of their book to the library? Which we may or may not add to, um. Thing, okay, I just wanted to make sure it's the same book.
Yeah.
Okay, that I understood that, okay.
So, and then there's also, if you'll notice too, just as part of this. Approval process, there's also the local author material submission form, which we have asterisks next to the I S B N number and a summary of the material.
Yeah.
Just so the librarians can look at it and evaluate it from there, um.
And I, I like that, yeah, for reviews and stuff.
Yeah, and we, and we indicated that it must be completed, we don't specifically outline what happens if they don't complete everything on here. But we decided that that was sort of, that helps with the discretion of library and, and with April's decision to, whether or not to approve it for collection.
Would you give the author a copy of the, our? Process for adding a book to our collection, so if they don't get added for some reason, they know why?
I'm actually, yeah.
Would that be helpful, do you think? I mean, if you were worried about perhaps somebody not. Appreciating our decision.
Well, I don't, the, the way we wrote this is, it, it, we have it in the first paragraph, the library reserves the right to refuse donations and we. And please see the library's collection development policy, development policy.
Alright.
One and donation of materials and equipment. And I believe that that, um, that collection and public, um, development policy says all of it's on the discretion of the, um.
Director.
The director or the, um, the reference director and so we don't really have to give an explanation of why we're not gonna accept it.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that's the way it reads and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, I would generally just, again, having been in the industry, I would generally recommend against giving a reason why we refuse it.
Yes, and I think we purposely, we actually discussed that and we, and it, you know, we purposely put that in there because, because we wanna make sure that this was, um. That we weren't in any kind of conflict with our library collection development policy, as you, you know, you're talking about, Jen. And, um, so you have a good point that, um, it says, please see the library's collection development policy. Is that available on our website? I think it is, yes.
Okay.
I think all of our policies are correct, except H R ones. Okay.
So I need a motion?
So I'd like to, I would like to make a motion, uh, to accept, uh, the local au- author policy newly numbered three E. And the local author material submission form. For approval, uh, contingent upon attorney review and approval.
I will say. I'll second that.
Can we, little discussion before we vote on that? So, are we going to accept at this point? After this motion is, uh, is voted in that? If the attorney says that we're gonna change this and this, we're just gonna do it and we don't necessarily have to.
You don't vote again, you mean?
We don't have to go any further with it.
Usually come back. We usually come back and, and, and review it again.
Don't really accepting it if the attorneys have.
Contingent, so, contingent on the attorney.
Uh, contingent on the attorney's approval.
Yeah, there, there have been occasions where we sort of disputed the way the attorney came back and rewrote it.
Yeah.
And then we wrote it again and sent it back to them for.
Okay, so how does that, how did that typically work out when you sent it back?
Yeah, they, they usually approve the, our changes.
Cause you're paying.
We made, well, yeah.
Okay.
Well.
Which is necessarily a good legal advice.
No, 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 I, I, I trust that, I mean, and maybe this is a bit of naivete, but I, I trust that generally if we ask them for their approval on something, we're not telling them to approve it. We're asking them for what they actually think about it.
Okay.
From a legal.
And, and they are, um, they are experts in, in.
Exactly, obviously, so. I was just trying to skip a step, you understand that, cause I agree, whatever the attorney says should be. Not gonna get us in trouble and they don't, they're not gonna get themselves in trouble.
Correct.
Okay.
So we shouldn't have a problem with it, but it, it should be contingent, so.
Yes, my question would be, I would ask for further clarification, because sometimes I know our attorney will come back and. Do some sort of minor grammatical change, having looked at his work throughout her. Personnel policy, and I guess that's what I would ask is, at what point do you want me to bring it back if it's just simple grammatical stuff?
No, if there's any change.
Okay.
There's any change.
Okay, so including any type of grammatical change?
Content.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think from that perspective, just because a comma can change the entire meaning behind something.
Sure.
So.
If you would include, um, the fight at the policy committee in that latter, I'd appreciate it.
Call the vote.
Okay, all in favor?
I, okay.
Okay, five yes votes.
Can you read that back, um? Can you have Carrie?
Eric, do you wish to accept House and three D contingent on review slash approval by the attorney, when the new seconded?
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other business? That we missed?
There was the IT consulting works.
Oh, yeah. Do that. Who's driving that discussion?
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, somebody.
Uh, okay, so. It's good time to renew our. Uh, I T consultant, uh, I just invited you both of their, um, information. As well as an I T consultant, Harrison Shee.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Are we doing this for twenty twenty six budgeting or have we run out of mics five hundred hours?
We've just run out of mics.
But it will, will it be used in our, we'll need it before twenty twenty six, it's what it says.
Yes, I thought this said October.
No.
I thought, where did I see this, I was, uh, T L N October.
T L N made a mistake on theirs and put the wrong dates. Well, that's.
So this is coming out of twenty twenty five budgeting or is this something that we?
As a prepaid.
If we do a prepaid and then we pull it out as we need it?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have it as a prepaid though for twenty twenty five?
Paid as a prepaid. All along.
That's just part of it.
When I first come in twenty twenty two, when I did it then. And then it's. It's excellent, that it says.
I know we hadn't talked about it as a group in a while. Okay, all right, yeah.
When the T L N, what's the difference between the desktop equipment support and PCs for hours?
So they divide their. Um, how they give support. And their desktop top equipment and PC hours. Um, different levels of service as opposed to, um. Microtech, which of, once at all, it means of one.
So the PC support, the network support then?
Right.
Okay.
The PC support is the network support? That doesn't make any sense.
That's what it said, provide quickly hours available for computer, PC and network support.
And network support, but it, but, uh, that wasn't, the question really is, um, what's the difference between a PC and desktop?
Desktop includes hardware, software troubleshooting, equipment installation, real to machine and.
So we purchased both of those to get the same.
It's listed as network support on the other.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because.
One says desktop support, one says network support, I think the desktop support is an error. I wouldn't wanna. Valid.
Well, and this is not, this is the, this is actually the comparison, right, that you wrote?
Right.
Okay, and so that's why. There's a confusion because really it's, it's a network support. It, the desktop equipment support is a hundred and fifty, the PC support hours. It the desktop equipment support is a hundred and fifty, the PC support hours, I'm assuming that is.
But the PC support is the network support, the desktop equipment is the desktop.
Yes, yes. So this shouldn't say PC support.
Oh, yeah, because of both of those then.
I'm assuming it's network support.
Which then would make that more technically.
Well, Mike's at seventy five dollars an hour regardless.
Well, if you add these together, it comes to sixty eight dollars.
Eighty and fifty five.
If you add all of it in together, is there is there a hundred ninety hours for the year, it's sixty eight dollars and fifteen cents or seventy eight cents.
Yeah, but the hours are gonna skew the cost one way or the other.
They they in T L N, the forty hours is um. At eighty, they give forty, they they estimate they're gonna need to get to us forty hours, right, in a year for the network support. So I agree, it's probably very, very minimal, but you need a different expertise.
They're close to each other, they're not horribly far apart.
No, they're less than ten dollars apart.
Yeah.
But there's in T L N, there's twenty three more hours over a three year period, there's actually um. Not twenty three more hours, there's um twenty forty sixty, there's almost seventy hours more in the T L N contract. Over a three year period than what microtech is on.
And you you're saying this adds up to more than five hundred hours.
Yes, Mike is right saying five hundred hours. Okay, I did the math. Yes, so Mike did, Mike's saying five hundred hours and it usually lasts around three years, okay? T L N is given, if we looked at it apples to apples, T L N would be giving us. Um almost a hundred hours, well, seventy hours more over that three year period. It's twenty three hours.
If we don't use them, do we get our money back?
No.
No.
We don't use either one if we don't get our money back.
Yeah, but I'm, you're trying to compare the two.
Well, how we.
Mike, Mike's might run more than five hours, Mike's might run more than three years, so yes, we can use his. You pass the three years.
I I'm not happy about about the upfront money, but we also are in a bind here and we really, as I look at it, we really can't use T L N. Unless, and I didn't finish in um reading your document, because it's the problem I had with microtech last year. And we went ahead and did it because it was done without really coming to the board, microtech um builds all the laptops here.
I remember that.
Oh, it's, I think it's an.
It happened.
travesty.
It happened before we were even aware of it. It was built out before we were aware.
Mike builds these pieces, these laptops, and if you look at the what you can get on the open market for a laptop. The laptops we're accepting from microtech are um much, they're not as robust, they don't have as much memory, they don't have as much RAM. They they don't have a touchscreen, all these things, and they're three times the cost.
Of a pre of a pre-made.
Like.
Like a Levano or whatever.
Right, I love Lenovo or HP or Dell. And so, but you know, they say, well, Mike supports these, okay, well, you know, if one and he supports him for five years. These PCs, they change so much over, you know, a um in a five year period, five years from now, the P the PC.
It's obsolete when you buy it.
Absolutely, absolutely. It was obsolete as he's building it.
Sure.
So I wasn't happy about that, but they were already purchased. The problem we have now and that the way I look at it is even though T L N's. If you look at this on paper and you don't know anything about the two companies, T L N is a better deal. However, if T L N won't support these custom-built PCs, we don't have a choice and we have to go back to microtech.
They do, they would, when they were here, we showed them everything that we had, they keep for six visits, and yeah, they would work on, and that's not.
They will.
That's not a problem.
Cause that that to me, being in this business. I personally would never touch them, I would never have accepted touching somebody else's custom-built equipment.
Yeah, they were working on our PCs and our desktops.
Okay.
And and I do wanna just make a small comment on the, well, I understand and. That's obviously not gonna be how we move forward in the future with laptops. Um I do wanna say that everything that Mike has built in this library since even before I came here has lasted a very long time. I mean, I know that it needs that it needs continued, whether it is out of. Out of date or not, it's something that we continue to use um as frugal like learnings. So I mean, there's stuff that we.
This laptop is over five years old.
Yeah, it's over five years.
He updates everything, I mean, it's. Not like he's ever said, you need a new one now, I mean.
No, we come back and tell them, well. He said, okay, these laptops are five years old, this is, and we have this replacement, you know, program going on. But I think that we shouldn't continue doing laptops there because it's so much more cost effective to buy them, you know, through like Costco or whatever. You could buy three of them for the price that we're buying one today.
Does he only allow us to purchase them through him or will he work on purchase elsewhere?
It depends, if we if we bought something and it was under a warranty, say from like a Best Buy. Then no, we would have to go with our warranty and send them.
Until the warranty is expired.
The warranty is expired, but then it would be something.
Yeah, and but my point was, when we looked at this last year, Becky. Even if that PC broke and it was so, a lot of these PCs like, you know, they'll be. They're two year warranty, right, and so then they're disposable, so if we spent, you know, I don't know, seven hundred dollars on a PC. And um then in two years, in two and a half years, it crashed, we're not spending, it's not even capitalized.
Yeah.
Right, because it's under a thousand dollars, so we're not even capitalizing it, which is another good thing that. To me personally, is that it's another piece of equipment that we don't have to capitalize. So um. So that was the thing that that bothered me last year with microtech is that, you know, we. And this is what we've done in the past, but computers have changed so much, you know, that it makes more sense to buy them, and I think everybody agreed in the board. And um in April that we would buy off the shelf in the future. Um, the only other thing that I really have an issue with, and I know that the the library staff really, really likes Mike. And um and they like his company, I didn't know how many people. Are in his company, so it was concerned that he was a one man show because Mike's the only person I've ever seen here. Um, and I don't like the idea of paying for five hundred hours upfront. Because um if for some reason they fold, we're out that money.
Okay, that's what your concern is.
Biggest concern.
You kept saying, cause it's a small company, that's your concern.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, because be- because like even, you know.
It doesn't say that.
What do you mean?
Um, it says here, what if Mike's out of business, they're gonna address this, you know, a microtech maybe. Appropriate agreement, states microtech and too many uh all prepaid agreements that, I mean, obviously I would. If that if he went out of business, um I need funding, all unused funds of the client's discounted subscribe rate. Uh they see separation as a company clause regarding the refund of unused funds by a nice. So if that to me looks like we would probably get our. Unused fund.
Perhaps. So.
I mean, sure.
Yeah, one, one point one says a prepayment in the amount of thirty seven thousand five hundred in exchange for five hundred hours of labor, is it? As the library sees fit, it's known as the ma- system maintenance agreement, I don't like putting out that kind of money in advance.
If this.
We would pay year, I mean.
We pay twelve thousand nine.
Every year, yes, okay. And they would come on site.
Since nineteen ninety nine, so.
Here's my one, my one counter to that to that argument, and I I. Saying that I I actually agree with everything you had to say, but the one thing that it plays devil's advocate for a second or two is if we're going out for a millage next year. If we don't get the millage, we're still gonna have to pay next year for the service that T L N would provide, we might not have the money next year.
That um we will, because that mi- millage isn't that big. We probably would have to use some of our fund balance.
Right, okay, love it.
Do you know anything who uses the T L?
Uh, not many, and I do know that um. The problem with them, what I've heard from other executives is that. They're not, and I kind of addressed them this, is that. Most suppliers, they don't have someone that they've hired to work as a. As an employee, nineteen employee, they need someone at least. You can start out as it says.
Yeah, they come twice a month. And then they go one to once a month.
They've got things. Or on this borderline of having enough IT. Issues on regular basis that I would not go home without having someone here oh weekly to address it. Now, sure.
So are those things that can't be addressed over um a phone call or in a in a network connection?
Sure, but there's things that are more lighter. Desktop or the monitors or things that Mike will work on that T L N will not work on. That if I don't have someone, then that could be, our monitors could be out for a longer period of time or something.
Is on those. Is T L N not gonna work on a monitor?
Well, if they can't be here, but maybe every other week or once a month, then that stuff's sitting here.
So are we talking about hardware support or just network support?
My my biggest concern is is the outlay of money upfront.
Uh is it possible to see if microtech could do either a a payment plan per year and upfront of a year cost or?
I could, I could go back and see if he's willing to break that up and offer a one year. Um do um.
Or a smaller amount of hours.
Yeah, say, you know, two hundred hours. It's it's worse, we don't have to sign anything, well, you said you're out of hours, so.
I guess I would rather, and that's fine.
Well, that is a question in ourselves, why are we out of hours and not and hadn't seen this ahead of time?
Well, we're buying by hours, not by years.
No, 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 you're talking about the use of the hours, why are we out of hours?
Get over to us to actually make that appointment.
So what are we doing in the meantime if we don't have any hours?
Ready before, but. We couldn't look, this was when you were gonna be gone. And so we held it off.
I had no idea that we were out of hours, though.
That always came rated after that, so I was trying to get it ahead of time, but we could just.
It would seem to me that Mike would still do it and we would just pull him out of the next bank of five hundred. That's how it's.
Is that what he's agreed to do?
That we just work on a bank.
I did not understand that.
If you don't buy them ahead of time, you don't get the discount rate.
But is that a gentleman's agreement? Or is that written in stone?
I don't.
You know what I mean?
He's been, he's he's in, he's been supporting the library since nineteen ninety nine.
It's a long time.
It's a long time, it's twenty six years, it's a long time.
I think big relationship, I would be concerned that he's not gonna be around.
Right.
Forever.
Yeah.
I I have I have two questions or comments about the T L N proposal, just reading it a little bit further is, number one, it says for the T L N visits. It's bimonthly for six months and then monthly for the next six months, so the older the equipment gets, the less frequently they're going to visit. Do I read that right?
Yes.
But that's the way their contract reads for in that, and they'll do the same thing again the next year.
Right, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that in general, if you've got hardware problems, you might look to have them later than earlier. Because of things wear and tear on a computer. That's, that's my question about that, the other part that I have a question about that I don't see defined anywhere in their agreement. Is what the difference is between being a. Silver level network support hour or a hundred and fifty hour of gold level desktop equipment support hour.
The the network support hours. Are for like the um the WAPs.
What, but why is one label is silver and one label is?
Is that just based on how many hours they think we need?
Yes, and it's also, they probably have to have a different kind of employee.
Like we would be purchasing the silver level, which would be those forty hours, so I'm assuming a gold level for.
Eight more hours.
But but that eighty dollars is because there there's there's a different skill set. That support that network equipment versus supporting.
Well, that's what surprises me about that is that it's usually, network support is usually more expensive than desktop support.
So I have a question for you, April. So what do you need from us today, and if you can't get an answer today, where does that put us?
If I can't get an answer today, then I think what I'll do is I'll just offer to Mike to um. I just don't wanna make him wait too much longer, so I may ask him to say, you know, hey. Where do you wanna go with this? Do you want me to flip the hours and then just pay for what you've done? I know he'll give us the discounted rate. Um if I pay him up to a point, uh and then. I can ask him if you want to see some different options. I would like to see a three year, but like you were saying.
If it's not.
At the year.
If it's.
They just don't wanna have to come back every year.
Yeah, well, and if it's not gonna be three years, would our discount be less? Well, that was one of my questions to to April, yes, because I think, you know, if we um said, okay, we're gonna sign for, you know, these, we'll sign for these five hundred hours. Our prepayment will be the first two hundred hours. And when you go through those two hundred hours, our next prepayment would be the next two hundred hours.
Alright, so in the third year, it would be a lesser amount and we would just finish it out.
You know, and I think that's the question to Mike, um, you know, I don't just.
Then we'll be able to see how many years it's taking.
Yes, to 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 build, you you know, say, to me, yes, yearly, so we'd bill for two hundred hours for twenty twenty six. We build, well, twenty twenty five, you know, July.
What, you know, if they if they run out in just eight months instead of twelve months, we'll see that too, if it's if we're consuming. Hours quicker than a three year rate, we'll see that.
We will see that, so. And but I I was, yeah, um.
How long did this last? I assume we had a five hundred hours prior to this.
You came in May.
Right after I started.
And you came in May of twenty twenty two, so with the this.
Right after, it's like.
Okay, so that five hundred hours lasted three years. And he he comes three hours a a week, right?
So but now we're out of hours. Within that three year period, so that basically gets used up.
It sounds like.
Which would make, so if he, if they, if there's something that comes three hours a week. For fifty two weeks, it's a hundred and fifty six hours in a year. Okay, so he's saying five hundred hours, well, you know, and you do three, that's four hundred and sixty eight hours. So he's actually done, you know, we don't, I don't remember when this was signed, um but it's slightly more. I mean, it that five hundred hours less is slightly less than three years, okay?
Yeah.
So.
Or more, cause we're in June. Depending on when it's actually started, when it didn't.
Right, yeah, right.
So what is our two, I I assume your your IT and I mean, I know they're. So what is our two IT people, that's what I wanna, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna get.
Problem with with Mike's service, I don't wanna pay um for five hundred hours upfront.
Eric.
That's generally my concern is the upfront cost, um it it does seem like. A lot to commit to and pay for upfront without some sort of uh. Astro or a banked amount, some some way, some way to protect our funds, but also not to have to have that cash outlay immediately. But I agree that I I think microtech. And maybe I'm biased because I have worked with T L N before on other things, um I, T L N is. A machine as far as being well-oiled machine, but I think that the personal service that you get from someone like microtech has a value to it.
Absolutely does. And he's been, he knows the library really, really well, I I've worked with him on the network issue.
With the library for so much time, I.
Well, he set up this. I mean, he's the only person we've used, so I mean, he set up the systems.
Which I like, and I I feel like that speaks a lot to itself too, cause then it's uninterrupted. That's just a lot of upfront costs.
I think there's something to be said for someone that almost seems like a member of the staff, if they're here on a weekly basis. As opposed to someone that comes in and comes out. On something like that, but I agree that the the upfront cost does throw me.
Okay. Yeah.
My only point was that we've done it in the past, so we should have a reason why we don't wanna do it anymore.
Um, I just think it's protecting i- is a board and is the treasurer for this board and our and our primary responsibility is the fiduciary responsibility. I think outlays for five hundred hours prepaid is um I don't, I don't like that idea. I'm more comfortable with two hundred hours because it looks like that would be more than enough to cover a year.
I understand that, but it's my understanding that the reason we did the five hundred was to get a certain discount. And if we do less than that, do we?
Well, we have to know what that.
But we just went over.
I know.
But essentially, we went over to five hundred hours in three years, you're telling.
Find out if we only pay for two hundred instead of five hundred.
What's?
Whether we commit to five hundred or not, what we pay for, does that still drive?
But again, I asked the question, and and if we can't make this decision today, where's this putter, puts her in a bind. Puts financially, because you're just gonna be in limbo by the hour, right, so how can we just, how can we speed this up, if I may please? So if we could. Can we just? Come up with the words, the the motion to allow her to go ahead. Put in this two hundred hours the first year, two hundred hours the second year, third balance, the year will be a hundred dollar balance, and if he agrees, then we agree. And if he doesn't agree, if this is the only thing.
The price, then it, then that's not gonna work.
Right.
I don't understand what you're saying, I don't understand what you're saying.
The hourly price we're paying is based on buying five hundred hours.
And if we don't have hours.
If we only buy two hundred hours, he may charge us eighty dollars.
Okay, but if we don't have, but we're gonna say we're gonna do this for three years, but we were gonna pay. Okay, but if we don't have, but we're gonna say we're gonna do this for three years, but we were gonna pay in three increments, two hundred. Two hundred and a hundred. He's gonna get, he's gonna get more than two thirds in the first two years.
Just saying, he hasn't done that in the past. The way you get the five, the seventy five dollars an hour is that you buy five hundred hours. We don't buy five hundred hours, even though we have every intention of using them, would he still give us seventy five dollars?
Right, and that's what we need to know.
And that's what we need to know.
The payment comment actually is a misread.
Is it?
I, I think, I think what, what they're saying there is that people that are service techs that come out do not, cannot take a check. That's how I read item number, payments, item number two.
Right, they don't accept, the professionals that show up don't expect, they, they're not gonna take the payment, because we do.
Somewhere it doesn't accept payment plans either. Maybe I misread it, but I think we really just want to stick with Mike. We just need to know if we can break the payments.
I just remember the last time we did this, it so, it says right here.
Hours.
So.
The price.
Okay. So changing the volume of hours may change.
It will. Well, I don't know if it will. When prepaid support reaches the end of the prepaid period, the system maintenance agreement, the S M A. Can be renewed or allowed to expire. If allowed to expire. And right now, we're looking at renewing it. Subsequent support will be built at the regular undiscounted hourly rate, which is currently a hundred and sixty five dollars an hour. Plus three quarters of an hour of travel at the current hourly rate. So right now, we're still receiving that discount.
Right.
Okay. So.
Now, would we have to pay the one sixty five for the time right now? We're out of contract? I don't know.
It costs close to a hundred dollar or two hundred dollars an hour. Or two hundred dollars for the first dollar and then.
Because he is, because he's been with us so long.
That discounted rate.
Sure, but his paperwork says that he doesn't have to.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so at any point, he can say, okay, you know what, I'm done with that. You didn't sign a contract for three years. And I'm done, so you're gonna pay this bigger rate, right? Okay, so we don't wanna make him mad. And we don't really wanna let him go, right?
Yeah, we don't wanna get to that point, but.
So why wouldn't he be in agreement? Then, why wouldn't he, why, why don't you think after twenty eight years, twenty nine years?
Twenty six.
Twenty six years were, were the service with us, that he wouldn't be. Willing to work with us on this.
I'm just saying, you know, I just remember there being a lot of negotiating and a big sticking point about how you got to seventy five dollars an hour. And Amy's nodding her head, yes. So. There is an implicat- there's, there's a potential for a problem if we. That's why, so we need to know what Mike wants to do.
Well, that's why we need to ask.
Yeah.
If we sign for, if we sign a three year agreement and we don't, and we prepay. Two hundred hours year one, two hundred hours year two, a hundred hours year three, is that acceptable?
At the given rate.
At the given rate.
Correct.
We have to ask him that, and we should be responsible and ask him, what should we be expecting to pay for these hours that are right now out of contract?
It, it is asking for a concession, because if you look at even just cost of living increase, let's say it's three percent additional per year, which has been more than that. In the last year. He's effectively losing money next year. If, if, if he broke even on this year's payment, he'll be, he'd be losing money next year. So it's like, it's like not getting a raise every year.
I'm just saying, I don't think we take advantage of Mike's loyalty and Mike's.
If you wanna vote for it like it is, I, I'm fine with that.
No, I, I don't, I'm not saying it's not worth asking.
Yeah, I think it's worth asking.
Then we need to just do that and vote on it next month.
I'll support it.
And figure out what to do in the, we, we need to pay for something until the next meeting. What's that gonna be?
And the worst case scenario, you get an answer right away and we call them at a special meeting.
We can do that.
Yeah, I mean, from a sales perspective, the question comes down to, does, do they want the deal? Even with the concession he has to make, or is he willing to possibly let it go to someone else because of strictly a price decision?
Yeah, I would rather that.
No, this is a purity decision. This is based on. Knowing that he's gonna be around in three years. That's, that's, that's the question here. And so we're gonna ensure ourselves. That if you're not, we're not gonna be outlaid all this extra money, right?
And April read where it says that we're supposed to get some kind of refund, you know, so that's. I know you're, I know we're all worried about that, but.
My concern about this one, uh, you know, willing to sign five hundred dollars, it's five dollars an hour, two hundred, two hundred, one hundred. Would be, um. If we, are we definitely, would we definitely commit to that? Because I think his concern would be that. He could be out if we.
If we don't.
But we're gonna sign a contract.
Gonna commit to three years.
The three payment.
The three thing.
And so we would just want it broken out, that this is due on this day, this is due on this day, and this is due on this day. So we. Have the security that we know where our money is.
I mean, I like O P M too. I like other people's money. I like the. And that's what he's doing.
Yeah, so, and my only question, if we do it this way, is if it gets to be November and we're out of hours.
Okay, what November?
Like, like, like we're talking about next year, we paid for two hundred.
This will probably start in July.
Well, so are we paying a three year contract? Or are we saying we're purchasing five hundred hours? And we will pay this amount on that, pay this on this, this on the.
And there's no guarantee the five hundred hours breaks out.
We already know it doesn't. We already know we surpassed five hundred dollars.
I don't know when this contract started. Yeah, and I know.
And I didn't hear what I heard.
Well, we're gonna end up at the same position potentially where it's June or it's July and we are out of hours. A- and so we haven't bought the next bulk yet. It just throws you out out yearly into.
I'm trying to suggest that we bring it up to zero and that we pay him.
Yeah.
That, um. So my question to him is gonna be, we're willing to sign for five hundred dollars at seventy five dollars an hour. Can we have a payment plan of two hundred? Uh, we're paying for the two hundred hours, then the next two hundred, then the one hundred hours. Correct?
Yes.
So you take the thirty seven thousand divided into fifths. We're gonna pay two fifths right now. We're gonna pay two fifths next year. We're gonna pay the final fifth in the third year, right?
And we're gonna pay it in July. And hope that covers a year's worth of hours.
If it doesn't, would we, I mean.
Exactly, we're right.
You're right, yeah, same spot. You're in the same boat you're in right now after three.
Per year, so I think what April.
I think it's an unnecessary worry.
Then the next two hundred, we have to pay early.
Exactly. That's what I was saying.
But we know where that money is until we pay it. Like, if worst case scenario happens. Maybe he goes bankrupt. We can't get that money back.
No, we're, then, then, then he's paying us.
There's no estate and we can't get that money back. So it's more for financially for the library.
Right, fine with all this, as long as it doesn't change the seventy five dollar rate.
Yeah.
If, if we start having.
We have to see if he would even entertain this idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
So if we have to start paying more, it's not worth it anymore.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern, is it's time value of money to him, is that thirty seven five right now. Is worth more than thirty seven five divided by three years because of the time value of money. So it's effectively like. That word in the hand.
Yeah, so to move this along and close the meeting, let's say, we need to find out for Mike if he's gonna accept a payment plan. At seventy five dollars an hour. If he's not, what's it change his hourly rate to? And then come back next month or an emergency meeting and we say, yes, we'll pay eighty five dollars on this payment plan.
No, I wouldn't, no, um, I, I wouldn't make it, I just.
Bill, you won't hear the first time we.
Jen, if you, if you mind, if you don't mind, please. So, um. And, and, and I don't wanna dive into Robert's rules and how meetings are supposed to be run, but when we're having a conversation, you're just supposed to make sure we have it orderly. Okay, and, and, and trust me, I value your experience in time on the board. But I understand how boards work and the fact is, is that, um, your opinion is your opinion.
It's fine, okay.
Okay, and so, and I wanna do this.
I need to talk about this anyways.
Oh, I'm being talked to. Hearing this, this part.
Yeah, I have no hard feelings. It's fine. We'll just stop this discussion.
Put it in the form of a motion.
So I, I am gonna put it in a motion that we table this um, agreement. Um, decision until um, we get more further information from um. Microtech. Our vendor of choice. To ask them with that five hundred hours. Agreement that we pay two hundred hours. Year one, two hundred hours year two. And a hundred hours year three.
Or when that two hundred, two hundred, one hundred run out.
Well, I think it'll be easier for him if it's on a yearly basis, because if he's only out here three hours a week, that's only a hundred and fifty six hours.
Okay, but if he does something else and has to use those hours to do that.
Would he really need to be here for forty four hours more in a year?
I don't know. If we got all new computers, we might need him to do more.
Eric, can you read back the motion? Thank you, when you're ready.
First year two, one year.
Year two, two hundred. Year three, one hundred. For the current fixed rate of seventy five dollars an hour.
All right. Gwendolyn, you've made a motion to table this issue until April. Can't pursue. Whether Microtech is willing to consider a five hundred hour commitment with payments in three installments, first and second years at two hundred hours, and then third year at one hundred hours.
At seventy five dollars per hour.
Yes.
Thank you. Second.
On favor? Five yes votes. April, can I ask that you would ask Mike? What he would expect if we use the hours before the year was up?
We'll first, we'll use two hundred hours and one in the first two years, what those will.
Mm-hmm, yeah, both ways. What's gonna be the process if we run out of hours before the year is up? Or if we have extra hours at the end of the year?
Yeah, I would assume that those extra hours would just roll over to the following year, since it's a five hundred year contract, five hundred hour contract.
You can assume a lot. I said, we can assume a lot of things.
Well, but it's a five hundred hour contract.
We're at hours right now, then you're only billing us at the discounted rate. You've been billed, right, and. I, I mean, April, right, you've been billed for. His time outside the five hundred dollars already. But we're, we were out of hours, you said, though, right? So how many accumulated hours do we have? Could you guess? Twenty, thirty, hundred? So, so we're under twenty hours.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably. William, you seconded that, right?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's something we need to think about in the future as well, because I was here in May, but I wasn't here in April. So this is now June, so we probably should resist this, you know, when we're down to a hundred hours. Because we were down to. Twenty five hours in then, and it wasn't addressed, right? So at a hundred hours, we should be looking at renew, what we're going to do going forward.
That's a good point.
Because in March, we were at about fifty hours and that left, and we should have looked at it before then.
Okay. So which committee would watch over that? Wouldn't.
Not a committee.
It's not.
Yeah.
It's just a. It's just, it's not building, it's not building. Okay.
Thank you, April.
Good discussion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to end the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Five yes votes.
Thank you.
Bill, I think I.